January twenty eighth, two thousand and five, beginning at three oh one, according to the iPhone. Councilman Mitchell, Lady Mitchell, would you give our prayer today?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Can we bow our heads? I'm not going to ask you to stand, but we'll bow our heads. Father God, we come to you today, giving you all thoughts and love of what we need to give you. We ask that you come in this meeting and watch over us, bless the council, bless the members, and just ask that you give us strength to do the right things in your way and the way that it will help our city achieve what we need to achieve. Bless all our families and just bless the world around. Amen.
Amen. All right, let's start with item three, Discover Odessa Quarterly Update. Laura, give us an update.
Yes, sir. I'm ready. Good afternoon, everyone. It's good to see you. Thanks for having me today. I know you have plenty on your agenda, though it did, it did seem kind of short. I'll still keep mine brief.
My laxus somewhere.
There you go. Let's see, okay. This is a quarterly report that we bring to you guys, obviously, four times a year. We're ending twenty twenty-four, so this is October through December of twenty twenty-four. I'm just gonna flip through it, give you a few highlights. I know this is something that you guys had already that you can read at your leisure, but I'll highlight a few things and then, of course, leave space for questions. The first page highlights the economic impact of the events that we supported this quarter. So there on the left, you'll see the total economic impact, broken down by month, for the events we supported. In the middle, you'll see how many groups that was, what the total attendees and total hotel nights were. And then you'll see on the other three diagrams that we have here, those are broke down into categories. Those categories are meetings, special events, and sports. And just for, you know, your knowledge, meetings tend to be your conferences, your business meetings. Your special events, what often falls under those are your trade shows, Silver Spurs trade shows, Mary Market, things like that. And then sports is pretty self-explanatory. I do want to point out in the top right corner that we have fifty-four properties and just under four thousand rooms in market. That may be something that, you know, everyone doesn't know. The next page gives a brief visitor snapshot. You'll see at the top that's sourced from Zartico. Zartico is a data platform that we use at Discover Odessa. There's a lot of cool information on this page. What I would like to highlight in the top left corner is the visitor percentage of the total. And there, in small print, it says, on a daily basis, this is the share of observed devices in the market that are classified as a visitor. And a visitor is anyone within fifty miles outside the city limits. And so during that quarter of those devices observed, we had about thirty-six percent of them that were considered visitors. The other thing I want to highlight is on the far right, your, our total hotel occupancy during that quarter was up nine percent. And then in the bottom right, your average visitor spending is interesting, of course, to see that accommodations is number one. Retail came in second, which oftentimes restaurants are, so I guess maybe people were coming in for Christmas holiday spending, getting gifts. And then restaurants was number three, and number four was attractions. Next, we have our groups assisted page. These are specifically the names of the events or groups that we assisted. Again, it is also broken down by your sports, your special event, and your meeting category. It's color-coded, so it's kind of quick and easy to see that this month, and oftentimes, sports took the lead in the events. Excuse me. That doesn't seem to translate well there. I hope it's better on your screens. If it's not, you may have the paper in front of you. This is upcoming groups and events, and so this is everything we have scheduled now through the future. We have a few events scheduled into twenty-six as well as into twenty-seven. And again, they're color-coded in the same categories. The next page starts our marketing report. There's three pages of that. This one includes digital marketing. This is our social media growth, our local insider blogs, our website performance, and as well as our Insider e-newsletter. And if you guys don't get that, I'd love for you to jump on our website and sign up for our Insider e-newsletter, so you can see some really cool inside information on events in our city. It is targeted for two visitors, but obviously, it's things that we can attend as well. The next page is our print advertisements, just a quick snapshot at some of the companies that we advertise with, as well as some of the advertisements themselves. Of course, some of them are small. It's not exactly intended for you to be able to read here, but you could go find it if you wanted to look for it. We could always bring them to you. We have all of these print copies at the office, so if you ever want to stop by and see us, we'd love to show you. Next, we have our digital advertisements and the people that we've advertised with. You'll see a few names repeated, as there are a few companies that we advertise, both print and digital. And we also, this last quarter, worked on our photo library. We had some photographers take some great photos at some events, as well as restaurants and attractions. Gone are the days of stock photos. People love to see, you know, real people interacting in your city. This next page lists our team highlights, and these are events and meetings that, as a Discover Odessa team, we participated in last quarter. And then our last page highlights the sports event recruitment program, which we often refer to as SERP. And you'll see the events we've supported so far, the amount granted, and the remaining balance. We're definitely working on getting some more sporting events here and getting them as much support as we can. And you'll see the economic impact from just these events as well. That's all I have for this printed report here. I did want to just share with you guys that next month, we're hosting THLA, Texas Hotel and Lodging Association. They're coming to give a course. Well, we have a seminar, and they're giving two courses. It's on human trafficking and the other on the hotel labor market. And we've invited our hotel partners to attend that, really helping them stay up to date on what's happening. And that, the human trafficking training is something they're required to have, so we love getting to have that available to them. And we do it in conjunction with Visit Midland. This will be the third year for us to do that, and we do that with the intention of, we have quite a few owners that have properties in both cities. I want to make it as easy as we can for our owners, and they really appreciate that. That's all I have for you. Did you see anything that you might have a question for me?
I had a couple of questions, but they're easy.
Okay.
Just because I already know the answers, but I think it's good to know. Going back to like the total economic impact, would you talk a little bit about what that means?
Absolutely, absolutely. And I forgot to point out that, for some reason, when we emailed this over, October seemed to be blank. I hope the one printed in front of you has October there. And so your total economic impact to your city is everything that that event is helping bring to the city. When that event comes in, yes, they're going to use the venue, if it's the Marriott and it's a conference, the Conference Center, or if it's a venue space at De La Gante, or a sports venue, they're going to pay for that field. But then how else is that event affecting the overall economy? What restaurants are they going to? They're having to purchase items while they're in market. They're going to have additional entertainment. And so that event coming to town brings this additional income into the region, the area of the city.
And then, are you all tracking, like comparing this to what's going into the hot fund? Like the room nights?
Not specifically. Yes, sir.
And then are you tracking short-term rentals, like Airbnbs and that stuff?
That's a great, that's great. We are not currently. We've been in talks with a company called Granicus, and we've had a few different conversations about trying to track those better. You know, we have some employment camps that aren't being tracked, as well as some other short-term rentals. And they were able to identify quite a few within our city limits that are showing to bring in income that could be a possible, you know, hot funds income for us. We're not currently tracking them, but we'd love to help move that forward. Thank you. Yeah.
Laura, one more question. I'm sorry, I'm not going to, I'm trying to correct you, but I know we're tracking, we are tracking those nights, hotel nights per event where we're supposed to be.
Yes, sir.
So that we know how to allocate hot funds in the fall.
Absolutely. I thought he was specifically asking for the hot fund. Like, I can't tell you exactly, based on this, how much hot funds came in, but I can tell you, we had this many hotel nights.
And that's what counts.
Yes, sir.
It's called heads and beds.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. We are tracking the nights. Absolutely.
Would you say how much, with, with the information that your sports committee has, what do you think the impact's going to be with the new sports complex going in when it gets up and operational? What do you think that number will look like? Times one, times two, times five?
Right. That's a, that's a great question, and I, I'd hate to give you a wrong number. I know it will be a very big change, a very big increase. And I could look at, you know, we could pull some numbers for what does an event, different events bring in different impact, right? Your girls, your boys, your youth events, your adult events. But we could easily pull some test events to see what these kind of events impact. And if we have twenty of those this year, we have thirty of those this year, we could very quickly calculate that. I can't, I couldn't give you the exact number right now.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I know that.
Thank you.
Curious what?
Laura, I have an easy question for you. You were talking about the sports recruitment program, accommodating them. What does accommodating look like? What do you do?
What do we do for them? Well, the sports event recruitment programs is a real simple one in that there's a very clear application. Everything is given post-event, and so we typically just cut them a direct check based on their expenses from an event. Now, all of the events that we service, we do all kinds of servicing. We're here to help however an event needs. We may help them with registration. We may help them with items in their welcome bags. We may help them by paying for a venue. We may pay for a meal. For sporting events, we've paid for, you know, pizzas one night. We'll pay for the green, the food in a green room. There's a lot of different ways that we can help events that come to our city, and the goal is to make it easy for them to come here. And whether we pay directly or we make the connection, that's another huge thing that we do, is we have the relationships here in the city with the restaurants, with the venues. We helped the exhibition football game, the Alabama game that played against Permian. We helped connect them with synergy, so they were able to feed all their students at one time, the band and the players. They were able to see a movie. They were able to play some games, and we helped to make, you know, that connection, so. Thank you. Is there anything else, guys? Guys and girls? Well, we'd love to see and visit with you anytime, one-on-one. I'd love to sit down with you if you have any other questions.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Now, I see some events not on here.
Okay.
Is that because they may not be part of the chamber? Or what is the reason certain events are not on here?
That's a great question. Right. So these are events planners that have reached out to us or that we've sought out. So that's fantastic point. If you know of events that are bringing in overnight stays to our city, we would love for you to connect us with that meeting planner, because our job is definitely to help them.
Okay. Anybody else? Well, thank you very much.
It's my pleasure. Thank you, everyone.
All right, let's move on to item agenda four, financial services update, our twenty twenty-three audit. Kayla?
Hello. Hello, Mayor Council. Thanks for having me up here. This one? Okay, audit update. We were able to talk to Greg with Weaver last week, and he assured us that by the end of January, he is going to be devoted to the city to get us, get our audit on track. He is actually going to come out to our location for a week in February. We're not exactly sure when, but he's going to be here. The goal dates haven't changed much. Again, this depends on the availability of auditors. He is optimistically hoping for April. The latest will be June, which is what he has said for a while now. I think last time we spoke to him, that's what he said. So that's the update as far as how the auditors are concerned. But what is finance doing? We've been working really hard. We've made audit our priority. With our duties kind of being shared now, we're able to put audit higher at the top, higher at the, top of the list. So several of our team members have been shifted to focus just on audit. Starting next week, we're going to start having myself, one day, Kaylee one day, and our controller one day, we're shutting our door. And all we're going to do is audit. One of the things that we've done to kind of speed along the process when Greg gets here is we've gone back over what we submitted for fiscal year twenty-two, compared it with what was submitted for fiscal year twenty-three, and we are going to try to proactively, proactively have everything he could ask for ready. I've also been pulling the documents we've already submitted and made sure they reconcile back to the GL. When they don't, we, I get that done and resubmit it to them. One of the things that drives me, I'm a check-off-the-list person. I'm not going to remember every year exactly what needs to be done, so I've been encouraging our controller and our lead accountant to checklist. I need to know what was done last year, what is done this year. And part of this process is making our month-end and our year-end closings on a checklist. That will speed up our fiscal year twenty-four audit. And one of the, we've always tried to communicate with each other, but with all of us being on the same floor and on the same team now, we're able to really communicate and stay on track with what we're doing. So that doesn't, saying it that fast doesn't sound like a huge improvement on what we were, but, but it is. We've really got the ball going now. It's only been a couple of weeks. Is there any questions?
I guess my biggest question is, is there anything we can do to help you, your department, finance?
Thank you for asking that. One of the things that we are looking at, and we've talked to Mr. Morton, and he's been very supportive, is we have really good people that are not necessarily in the right spot. We're working on looking at our staffing as we're going forward. And one of the next times we meet, I'll kind of show you our timeline. We're probably going to, you know, need to adjust our staffing some, things like that. We do have a financial consultant that his focus has been shifted straight to audit. He doesn't come very often, but he is a retired financial director who's done this for so many cities in Abine, so he's been helping us. So just allowing us those resources is really what we need help with.
Further, I guess in the follow-up to my question, I know departments have to help you provide that. What can we do, or what can y'all do to help all the departments? We just finished twenty-two, it seemed like, not very long ago.
Yes, sir.
We worked on twenty-three. We're got, we're four, it's already, should be in progress.
You're right.
What can we ask the departments to do to help you guys get it done faster, for lack of a better word?
So we've been real fortunate with our departments. I do have to give all our departments credit. Whenever we ask for something, they tend to respond as quickly as they can. We are having some problems getting some of our information, but it's stemming to our cyber attack. Some of our systems are still down, and that's, that is slowing us down. We have made the auditor aware, and he's looking to see if there's other ways he can take the information. At this point, our departments have been very responsive. They, they, of course, have their own schedules, but they do understand audit takes a high priority. So as of right now, we're not having any issues.
So how much of that would you say is a software issue? Not everybody's using the Tyler Munis stuff, hadn't been implemented in all the departments, everybody's, I mean...
Which, do you mean like what's slowing us down is that?
As far as getting information from departments, or, you know, you just mentioned you're having trouble, you know, getting things from departments and...
So some of this problem is from the benefits software. That one hasn't been able to get back online. And since we've changed our benefits, that is going to help, because we will have outside sources being able to provide us some of this data instead of us relying on our own, you know, two-person staff to get us all that stuff. That's going to help tremendously. One of the other things that we're working on doing, and I do have this in my timeline, so I'm glad you asked, is we're not using our capital asset software that we have in Munis. IT is working with Munis to get that set up. So that's going to help tremendously, and that's going to help with so many things, our inventory. Just building the, the capital assets for our orders is a very time-consuming process right now, and it's very manual. And capital assets in a government setting are very complicated, because you have to do them two different ways. Another software is our bank reconciliation software. We were not able to use it in Munis, because the Munis system we had was so outdated that they could not run the fix to patch some kind of system error there was. We do have the newest version now, and we are getting that up and going. That's going to save us a tremendous amount of time. So you're right to point out the integration of software as being an issue. One of the things that is going to help along lines of fiscal inventory, and then with budgeting, is our MGO software we're implementing too, or has been implemented in some areas, but working on others. So that's a very valid point. A lot of our stuff was still being done with spreadsheets.
I just know we have that to discuss tonight, and I, I keep hearing that's been an issue, so.
It has.
I'm curious about how we move forward with that and drag ourselves into twenty twenty-five.
And we need to do that. And our Munis software has a great financial reporting system that we can't utilize just yet, because we don't have all the components in place. That's definitely on our, when audit's done, that's definitely where our focus is going.
I guess two questions. You mentioned there's someone coming in to help occasionally. Does anybody get that person more? More than occasionally, like every day or some crazy number like that?
I'm so glad you asked that question. I actually talked to him today, because I was going to see what his availability was and then talked to Mr. Morton. He does this for a lot of cities, and so, but he's going to get back with us and let us know. And he's very good. He is the gentleman that came in when we didn't have a finance director. He's the gentleman that came in and did it then. He's, he's very well-versed at this. When I ask him a question, his answer's always this quick, and I always say, when these days, I'm going to be Eddie. He's real good.
Follow-up, I know when we have the twenty, I see the dates for the twenty-three, but as you know, dates ticked on twenty-four.
Yes.
Any update on, like, any, can we move that date? Is it hopefully to move that date up, or are we just too early to tell?
I can give you a best guess. So one of the things we're doing as we do the fiscal year twenty-three audit information is we're also starting to pull it for the twenty-four. Now, we don't necessarily have the time to compile it and make sure it's right, but we have our, we're trying to get all of our pieces together. Our end, the finance end for the twenty-four audit is going to be much faster, because I will have gone through the process completely. We will have the data from where we've pulled it before, and we're going to be well ahead of the game because of that. We've also started, one of the things that we're going to talk to Greg about when he gets here is start to schedule us for that. If we can show him the progress that we've made for the twenty-three, I believe he's going to feel confident in scheduling his team for us. I believe the last time Kaylee was there too, so correct me if I'm wrong, I believe he was looking at, he was going to try to get us in November.
November.
I mean, that's, that's, that's the hope. That's the hope. And we're working hard for that.
I understand, but we would love to be able to move it even up sooner, if possible, for a lot of reasons. But I understand.
We, I will talk to him, and we will do our part if, to their, but if it's possible, I promise it'll be done.
Thank you. I think Greg?
Both of us.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, Kayla, I was just going to ask you, you were talking about closing the door and doing some auditing. I see number crunching. I can visualize that real well. But my question is, with Munis or any other software programs, does it help you? Does it find and alert you to potential audit problems? Do you get any help from the system like that, or is it just run?
It just runs. But having said that, if we are doing our monthly closes correctly, if we are doing our quarterly reviews correctly, I can pull the general ledger and the trial balance. I can tell you that quick where our problems are. That's just something that you learn over years. Where we are right now is we're still trying so hard to play catch-up, to get all those regular things in, that when I look at the trial balance and I see something that doesn't feel right, it takes a lot of digging to find out if it's really not right, or if we just haven't got there yet. It's, it's a bad situation. We've, they've been surviving. And so now we're moving beyond surviving, and we're going to get that done. But that's a good question, and that's something that'll be done whenever we start providing your monthly financials. In my opinion, that's the real point for me to do the monthly financials. It's not just to provide you information. Yes, we want you to have what you want, but when I do the monthly financials, that's where I see the problems. And so, yeah.
Catching the problem in May, not in December.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Before the, the auditor should never see our problems.
Chris, you have a question?
No.
Okay. One else? We do appreciate all your work and all the stuff in finance. We really do appreciate it.
Appreciate everybody, y'all helping us in finance and working hard, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move to agenda item five. We're going to discuss food trucks, including the ordinance requirements. Craig?
All right. So I, I see several in the audience who know this has been something on my mind for many years, and something that's been brought up to council many times, but just, there's never been any movement on it. So I wanted to just kind of start the discussion, see where we go with it and why we are where we are, and, and just kind of figure out, how do we kind of peel the onion back and figure out some of these things we can get rid of to make it easier for the food trucks to operate and just kind of get the city out of the way?
Well, good afternoon, Mayor Council. Thank you for, thank you for the invite. Absolutely, we want to start the discussions, and I want to, so I have a PowerPoint I want to present to you guys. But before that PowerPoint, I want to give a little bit of history of food trucks and how we're at this point now. So right now, there is a food ordinance, a food truck ordinance that was adopted many years ago. That food truck ordinance has been revised over the years. I don't know by whom or at what time, but I just know it's been revised. For example, I'll give a perfect example. At one time, the food ordinance said there was like a cap of twenty-five mobile food vendors that could have worked, that had permitted and could work in town. Well, somewhere down the line, they got changed to fifty. So now it's fifty. That's what it says, another fifty. Now, following up on that fifty, the time that I've seen this, we've never gotten to fifty except for last year. So last year, we got to fifty about December. So at that point, we were, we were maxed out.
Is there a reason for a max?
I have no idea what that max was.
I think the history may be that, as it's gone to council over the years, and as food truck industry took off, there was some desire to protect the brick-and-mortar restaurants. So you had a balance there. So is that really an issue? It's more for you guys to decide, and what you hear from your constituents. And that's, I think that's a reason for some of the regulation in here as well. Twenty-four hours, you're going to be twenty-four hours in one location, some of those type of things. But I think that the cap, again, was originally designed to recognize the value of food truck, but also to protect the brick-and-mortar restaurants.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Yes, sir. So some of the stuff that affected this as well is in two thousand and twenty-two, the City of Odessa adopted the International Fire Code twenty twenty-one, a revised version. So we're going from twenty twelve to twenty twenty-one. At that same time, the City of Odessa adopted a fee schedule for the Fire Marshal's Office. So now you have the fire code that, the actual new fire code has requirements for food truck, mobile food vendors. That was never the case in two thousand and twelve, because two thousand and twelve mobile food trucks just weren't a thing as, as twenty twenty-one. Though it caught up, you know, the fire code is always trying to catch up, so it caught up to it and said, these are what the requirements are. Okay, when we did that, we were already doing, so I say we, there's a lot of entities that is involved in this process. You know, there's code enforcement, there's billing collection, there's PD, there's us. So it's a complex procedure. And when this happened back in twenty twenty-two, and we adopted all this, we basically, as a food trucks, were applying it with us, with our part, right? We were, when they would come get inspection from us, we would give them a copy of the ordinance or the policy and say, this is what you're going to have to meet next year. You're getting a year's grace period, basically. By next year, you're going to have to meet these requirements, which was hood suppression systems was a major one, granted, because nationwide, cooking is still the number one cause of fire, so I'm, that's why it's still in there, I imagine. So anyways, fast forward to last year. Last year, Fire Marshal's Office saw a need as far as this is a complex procedure, because we hear that all the time from food trucks as well. Like, I'm going over here, I'm going here, what am I doing? So we decided to set up meetings with the key players, with everybody involved. We got everybody together and met with them and said, okay, what is your process in this? What is it you do for, like, code enforcement? What is it you do? And they, everybody told us, this is what we do, you know, code enforcement, basically, they hand out the applications, they receive them, make sure that everything's, all the stuff required by the ordinance is, there's people that, in other words, just filled out, it's complete. So at that point, we said, well, we can do that. I mean, we want to simplify this, and we want to streamline it. We can do this. So let's, let's take over that section as well. Let's us do it. PD was the same way. You know, we met with them, Chief Kirk, you okayed it. We said, we can do that part two. So that left us with us and billing collections, right? So for about a year, us, the city is, you know, you guys are familiar with MGO. We have MGO. Well, MGO does a lot of permits for us and for billing inspections, for billing inspections and stuff like that. We've been in talks with them to get a permit process for food trucks. That way, it can be done online, even, even easier. We've been in talks with them to get a permit process for food trucks. That way it can be done online, even, even easier. You can pull the permit, you can go through the process, upload everything, just come down, get inspection, you're done. Basically it's a one stop shop. Well, right now MGO is still in that process. They haven't completed all that. So we haven't gone to that point yet. So we still have to get billing collection to collect, basically. So anyways, that's where we're at right now. This, so this, this PowerPoint that I'm about to present is a little bit of the process of, of how to go along. So of course, like by ordinances, by city ordinance, you require to get a permit, uh, through, through the city. So right now as it is, is us trying to simplify it, we're basically the Fire Marshal's Office, you come get the permit from us, the application. Or you can get it online. We tell the food trucks is you can get online or you can come, come talk to us and we'll give it to you. Once we give it to them, they go back and these are the forms on there that are required by city ordinance for them to fill out, for them to have as far as, uh, you know, release, hold harmless, and it's, there's an explanation for every one restroom facility. A lot of this stuff is from health code, by the way. It's, it falls back on the health code stuff. It has nothing to do with the fire code. It's more of health code that was adopted as part of the ordinance.
Okay, before you go any farther, how long you been in that position?
Uh, two years.
Two years. You the one I had a discussion with?
I don't.
By a special event. See y'all, y'all got two different rules here. Because I have a food truck, but you were trying to put me under the food truck as far as I want, I'm a brick and mortar. Y'all don't think about the brick and mortar. All y'all think about is the food truck that want to be on the corner. When I talked to you two years ago, and that, matter of fact, it was last year for Firecracker Fandango, y'all couldn't explain jack to me. I go, look, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a brick and mortar. I've been doing it 20 years. Well, if you want my truck to be the same as a truck that's running from corner to corner every day. And that's different because if I'm just going to use my food truck for four to five hour event and I'm a brick and mortar, then that's a different situation. Do you follow me?
I do, yes, sir.
And y'all couldn't tell me that last year. It was still, nah, you got, and y'all had me to go up there and buy a freaking permit for a whole year when I only maybe do one or two special events. Special events, y'all need to go back and look at that. Are a little different than me wanting to put my, because I don't have time to put a food truck out there every day. So I just, Firecracker Fandango, June, T, Low Rider Show. Y'all need to go back and look at your book and see, compare that to what you want right here.
Well, and, and, and what, what I'd like to end up with here today is, is group to get together to look at these things and say, all right, this makes sense, that doesn't make sense. That is the health department's problem, not the Fire Marshal's problem. Let's give that to them. And, and figure out how the ordinances need to change to, to make sure that you can do what you need to do, that you can do what you need to do. And everybody's labels are, are right, that, uh, you know, everybody recognizes that, and I can't remember what you're supposed to be called, but that, that you're not a push cart, you're a, a mobile food unit that, you know. So, yeah, that, that's kind of my goal here today is to kind of get some direction on how to sit down, get everybody, get the health department, you guys, the, the players in the room. And say, all right, this makes sense, this doesn't make sense. Fire department doesn't care about if you've got X, Y, Z.
Listen, I've never even seen this. I'm learning the new.
So, so continue.
Finish it.
Yeah, continue on.
Good discussion.
And, and that's.
Yes, sir. So thank you. So there is, you're, you're correct. Uh, special event permits is a whole different, different thing.
Well, I ended up buying it. I'm going to leave it alone. But I ended up buying a hundred and fifty dollar permit. Well, I don't use the truck, so I just gave you guys a hundred and fifty dollars for no reason.
They appreciate it though.
But we need to look into that. And when we do get a meeting, y'all need to make sure y'all come get somebody like me or somebody, and that's a brick and mortar that doesn't really have to file under these guidelines because it's just a four or five hour event. You know, there's different rules for it, even with the health department. So next time we, uh, whatever we start doing that, make sure you involve, involve a brick and mortar for special events. Not just for running around the city because I want to change a different corner every time.
Yes, sir. And, and I'm assuming the special event permit was also created for people that come out of town.
Yeah.
As well. Because they do one event. Why would we want them to get a, a, you know, an actual permit just like anybody else? There's other food trucks that work here all year, but these guys come in for like Fandango for a special event. That's why there's a special event clause in the ordinance.
Right.
So according to ordinance, this is some of the things that's required. Restroom agreement, facility agreement, loc, you know, they have to have a loc, location authorization. Basically you have to have permission from whoever, where you park. The, the, the owner there has let you get permission to park there if not. So all that is in the city ordinance. So anyways, going back to us, when we, when we get the, uh, the application and we give it to the, uh, food truck, at that point they should take it and fill it out. Uh, once they fill all that out, bring it back to us, we'll verify it. We'll basically do what, what the other parts were doing. At that point, we'll go ahead and conduct a, a fire inspection. If they're ready, if they bring the food truck, we conduct the fire inspection. Uh, once they pass it, normally they're, most of the food trucks are, are reoccurring. So they know what to expect. So they usually pass on the first try. We hardly, we hardly have people that fail based on stuff like that. Anyways, once they do that, uh, we can go ahead and give them the tag that goes on the window and says, hey, you guys have been inspected. You're good to work in City of Odessa, uh, as far as you have a permit to do that. Uh, and, uh, at that time, we also give them a, a slip that they have to go to billing collection and pay because we still have to have, go through that process because we're not set up with MGO. So we, we're at least narrowing it down to a two step now. It's a lot easier. And this is some of the stuff that, on that list that's get, that gets inspected that the Fire Marshal is, is interested in as far as stuff that's in the fire code. You know, extinguishers, the LPG gas, we make sure that your lines, we, we test them to make sure you're not having leaks. Uh, we also, fire suppression systems is a big thing. Most people that work, actually everybody that works here knows that they have that. Uh, we check cooking appliances, just general safety stuff, you know, electrical cords, stuff like that. Upon that, this goes with the same, no, with the step three, upon that, we give them the tag, which vendor tag, that they put on the, on, like I said, on the window to show that they've been inspected, they're good to work here for that one year. Uh, and then at that point they take that to the, the slip we give them. They take it to billing collection so they can pay for, pay for their inspection and their, and their permit. This is some of the stuff, the, the next slide is some of the stuff that's on the, on the city ordinance. It's not the fire code, but it's still city ordinance that we have to look at and say, okay, because this is a city ordinance, you still have to meet that requirement, right? Because it's adopted still. You have to make sure you have waste retention, portable water, refrigeration, mobility. All that goes back to, and the hours when you can work, all that goes back to the ordinance. So we're, we're, we're basically following with ordinances with, now we have the fire code that we're actually more interested in, you know, because this is what we want to, we want to prevent fires.
Well, and this is again, back to your point, this is all coming from the county and they're actually rewriting their food truck rules because these are old.
Absolutely.
The, the food code has changed, so this is a good time to do this.
That's, I believe that's, that was the last one. Yes, sir. That's, uh, all I have for this presentation. Any questions?
Can you go back to that and just talk about some of the?
One more.
One more, one more, one more.
No, you're going the wrong. Yeah. He wants the, the ordinance page.
Oh, we'll go this way?
This one?
Right there.
Yes, yes. Okay.
I think that's probably what y'all want to talk about, some of what you want to talk about, the hours of operation, the 24 hour limit. Do we still require restrooms? Those types of things.
So the, the big things that have come up in my conversations were the, the cap on the permits. You know, visiting with the county, they've got a cap, 25, uh, is the, the limit, but she said that they've got, uh, 200.
Oh, yeah.
150 have already paid, so they don't honor the cap. But, uh, you know, hey, why, why are we turning money away? They don't have the, the requirement, um, you know, again, she said that, that as the, the, you know, I, I, that was my question. You've got the TAC and the TEEFER and the, all this and they've kind of understood that condensing all of this stuff down into the food code makes it easier for everybody to understand. But, you know, my question was really, if they've got to pass a, an inspection from the health department, which they're doing their, uh, fair right now, if you will, everybody's taking their food trucks to the Coliseum for the last three days to get inspected. If you've got to pass the health department check to get your license, I don't understand why any of this is in the city ordinance. Because the health department is, is the authority on regulating food. You know, we don't even have a mechanism to go inspect this stuff. It would be the health department to go inspect it. So, you know, this, this is a little, I, 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 you know, even listening to you talk about it, like we have to look at it because it's in the ordinance, but it, we don't even really know what to do with it.
I mean, you're correct. We don't go out there and check some of that stuff. Yes, sir.
Knowing it's something. Do you have, so if the county's doing this, are you inspecting the county stuff?
No.
So here's where, here's where we're going to have a problem. Does that mean that the guys in the county can come to the city at any time?
No, they'd still have to have a city permit.
Okay. That's, that was on my question.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure.
It's a big difference. It's things you can do in the county, but you can't come to the city and run that truck. Because you go sit on the county street and get away with it.
Yes, sir. And on our, on our, we get, like, we get those complaints all the time because the food truck industry, they, they call us and complain on the other ones all the time. So we go out there and enforce that. Like, hey, you can't work, you're not, you're not permitted to work here. So here's your citation and.
But, but sitting down with the, with Brandy at the health department yesterday, and, and again, as they're going through their rules, it just sounds like this is a good time to, to get the players together at the same table and say, all right, look, as, as the Fire Marshal, I care about this, 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 this and this. And as, as PD, I care about this, 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 this and this. And as planning and zoning, I care about this, 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 this and this. And then we all have our fights and figure out what we really need and then move on from there and let the county care about their part. And streamline it and make it as easy as you can. I don't, again, I'm kind of with you. I, I, some of this other stuff, I don't know why it has to go through five different things. So I appreciate that you have taken on a lot of this stuff.
Thank you.
To, to streamline it and, and hopefully, you know, kind of, kind of like all this other stuff, what can we do to help get the MGO up and running? So that people can use it and do this stuff online and, and make this stuff easier. Because that's been, that's been my goal all along is to, you know, again, kind of get out of the way.
Yes, sir. I understand this. Do we have different rules and regs for like a push cart versus catering versus food trucks versus people that show up at the fair? I mean, I'm, I'm just confused.
So that's on the health code.
Rules and regs are installed under this, encompassed under this.
Yes, sir, they are. However, like, we don't have much to do. I know there's different.
So the health code prescribes what a push cart is.
Yes.
And that's depending on what you're serving out of it. If it's, you know, fruit, packaged foods, um,
Ice cream.
Ice cream, uh, those kinds of things. Catering is more like what, what Councilmember Mitchell's talking about, that he's cooking it at his restaurant, but he's serving it out of the truck.
Yes, sir.
Jim has the, the hot dog cart, but they're trying to classify it as a push cart, but it's not. It is a mobile food unit. It, because of what he's serving, the, the, what, what being served out of it. So I don't know why the city doesn't allow him in the city limits, uh, based on what is said in the ordinance. And, and the only thing I can identify, and it's not on here, it's in page, whatever it is, but, uh, as some of the requirements are, uh, the enclosure and by nature of the cart, it's not enclosed.
Correct.
So I, I guess that's the problem with it, which, you know, I, I, I almost feel like, you know, if the county health department doesn't have a problem with it, why do we?
Here's what we have, I mean, this is what we have to do as a council. You have to pass what you want allowing the city. That's what we do. So if you want carts in this town, we need to just pass an ordinance or an amendment to this. Which is a lot easier. Am I wrong?
Yeah.
I think an amendment is a lot easier to do than.
You could, I mean, I, I think, I think you're on the right track. I think that what you do is you sit down, you get all the parties together like we discussed earlier. And you basically put them all together and you tell me, okay, this is what we want, this is what we don't want in this ordinance. And then we bring it before council and two weeks, four weeks or however, when y'all ready, and then we do it. Because ultimately, and, and Councilman Stoker, it's like we discussed this morning, ultimately it is with the health department. They're the one, because it's all in the health code.
Should we wait till they finish their new requirements before we do anything, Greg?
I mean.
Well, I think it's a concurrent conversation. I think we all sit down there, they're through theirs, they're looking at the food code saying, all right, this has been updated. This doesn't make sense anymore. This doesn't apply anymore. So we strike it. We, we go through and redline it as, as they're doing it.
Somebody help me. Do we form a committee like an Ag Hawk? Can we look at it, Richard? How's the easiest way to get?
I think the, the one thing is he's using LP just like the, all, all of these guys are using out here. Everybody's using LP. So you got to come up with a regulation to, to maintain that LP, which would put his card under the same deal. He has to get in inspected. Do you want the fire department to inspect it? Do you want the city to inspect it? For me, you've got 20 people here doing the same deal, but for me, pay, you be able to pay your permit online. You can't get your permit until these guys sign off on it.
Yeah.
So once it's all signed off or you send it in or you come down here and drop it off, but you can go ahead and do everything online and get ready. And then you're going to have to limit how, how many trucks you want in town. You do need to do that. You can't go down that street and have 70 carts set up down on, on a, on a busy street during an event because nobody's going to make money.
So.
Pretty much. And so the other deal is none of these carts have bathrooms. So here's the one thing. They have sinks in there to wash their hands and everything, but you have to, how are you going to furnish bathrooms? How many porta jones are you going to set up? How many sinks are you going to set outside those porta jones? Because you need to wash you up after you come out. Period. If that's what you're going to do. So you're going to make up all of this stuff, not just the food carts. You got to come up with a bathroom ordinance. You got to come up with something because you can't go in other people's buildings and wash up and use their bathrooms. It's okay if they can do it to start with, but as temporary, if you're going to set up for 24 hours, you need a bathroom and you need a sink. That's, that's something that you're going to have to look at. So there's more than just the carts. You need to look at the bathroom deal. So.
Yeah, the, the other thing I look at is basically, a lot of this is taken care of because you have, say the fire department. You're making sure that they have a fire extinguisher in the truck.
Correct.
All that, we don't care about. That's safety. Health department is where food handling and all that, we don't really care about that because those are set rules. We're just simply trying to make this proactive and pro-business for Odessa.
Correct.
So your ordinance, as it is, as it exists today, is the result of doing exactly what you're talking about, Councilman Stoker. Early on, when we went through this process, multiple meetings with food trucks vendors at the time. What do you guys need? What are we doing wrong? How can we make it better? We can do that again and let's take a look at it. And we just call a meeting of, of every interested party. If you, if you want to comment on the existing ordinance, suggest changes, then we can share that with council in another workshop.
And I would, I would say that Councilman Stoker, Councilman Mitchell needs to be on it as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Because he's a unique niche right there, you know, that, and then y'all sit down and work it out and then say, tell us what you want, we'll do it. Pretty much that's them.
Yeah, we've, we've done it before. We can do it again and keep improving.
Yeah, I, I would say it's time.
We don't need a motion on that. We can just do it.
No, do not need a motion.
As Captain Picard, you say, make it happen.
Thank you. One, I'm sorry. Just one thing we're going to have to do though, is we're going to have to either take the number of food carts off of the ordinance or as significant a number because we're making a solary back or somewhere. We've got a whole, on the sports complex, we've got a whole section.
Yeah.
Set up out there for food, for food trucks so that nobody has to come all the way back down into.
Yes, sir.
191. So that, it's something to be, that, that thing's got, that part's got to change. I have a problem with the rest of it. I, I don't want the health department checking those LP.
No, no, no.
Tanks or anything. That's what, that somebody, I don't want them doing that, but making sure they got a, you know, a sprinkler system and so forth.
That's good. Well, y'all.
Anyway, just.
We're going to make it happen.
We'll make it happen. But you also have a, an inspection department that could do that too, instead of the fire department doing that. You have an inspection department here that could do this too.
The one that's already paying for inspections.
Our inspection department downstairs, it does, own houses, it does plumbing, it does all of that. So, if you have a guy that's inspecting plumbing, he can inspect the gas system.
So, Councilman Hayner, we, we, we do these inspections because they're under the fire code. And the fire code just tells you, it tells you, this is what you're gonna do, and this is how you're gonna do it.
Are you doing it for the houses, too?
No, no, just, it's just mobile, just the mobile food trucks.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you. We appreciate your input, and we'll be looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six is consider any questions concerning the, on the agenda for 28. Counsel, do you have any questions for the gents on item 48?
Well, I think my only question was about going back to software tonight, and I saw that item on there to discuss. Is that what this means?
Yeah, you can just, I asked Norman to put that on there. If we have time, you can ask any question on agenda item, and we'll discuss it.
So, I just feel like we've had a lot of discussions about this software, and I do also feel like we've kind of keep coming back to the fact that it's, hadn't been implemented, it hadn't been done right. It's not, nobody's happy. Finance is happy, but...
Yeah, um, so I have a unique perspective. I've been with the city on and off 15 years, and I've been, I've touched every department. I've been in big implementations, small implementations. I can tell you what our biggest problem is. It's processes. People think that software is supposed to dictate what we do. It doesn't. We're supposed to know what we do. And then we laid software on top of it to help us be, um, more efficient, to automate it. But if we don't know what we do, software doesn't help. The finance, the assets, the assets we've been trying to implement for, like, three years. It's not, when we go back to Joanne Sanmiego, she was the old purchasing director, finance was behind. So, they kept telling us to push it back a year and a year, and that's fine. You know, we're willing to do that. But again, we get behind because we don't operate smoothly, right? I mean, every, there's been times that I've implemented software, that I felt like I picked up the department, carried them across the finish line, and just threw them across. And I had to learn everybody's job. I shouldn't have to learn what everybody does. Like, there should be subject matter experts that I can go to and say, some departments are very good. They know what they do. But once you go upstream or downstream, they're like, yeah, I don't really know. And it's like, we can't stop there. Like, you have to know how it flows, how information flows, how responsibilities flow. You have to know that. I mean, I've had people come to me and be like, hey, we need to automate this, and we want to do this. And then I'm just like, well, you're just shifting responsibility to another department. You're not improving the process. You're gonna decrease the cycle type, or you're gonna make it less efficient, because now you're gonna have a bottleneck in another department, because they're doing more work. But they don't understand that, because they only see what they do. So, it's, 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 it's not as easy as just saying, let's implement and put these things in motion. It's, we have to, we have to be able to understand what we do and how we do it. We have to. I mean, I know for a fact we struggle in that, because, like I said, I've touched every department in the city, every department, and we always struggle with that. Always. I, I, I had a director come to me one time, and he said, I need a report. My admin runs this every Tuesday. Can you get it to me? And I said, yes, sir. I was like, what's the name of the report? He said, I don't know. You're supposed to know that. I said, well, what system do you pull that from? He said, I don't know. You're supposed to know that. I was like, can you show me a copy of it? Because I don't have a copy. I just throw it away. You're supposed to know that. This is culture. It's systemic. It's too much reliance that, like, no, of course I don't know what report your personnel runs. We, we've had people who would leave, and then when they hire somebody, call us to train them. And I'm like, how am I supposed to train you? Like, I, we can, and we'll go over there and mess with the software and get it going, but I mean, you should have SOPs that your people can look at. I mean, this is, um, and I'm sorry, because I know I'm ranting, but I'm frustrated. I'm very frustrated, because it's, it's not just IT. Like, we, we need help. I mean, we just can't. I can't, we can't know what everybody does, you know? And it's too much to ask an IT person, say, learn everybody's job, so you can implement software. Like, that's a lot. I mean, when I were implemented with Munis, there was days I worked a month, 40 days without days off, 15 hours a day because of that, because we didn't know what we do. We're, I, I mean, our subject matter experts, we had really good people. Like I said, we struggled with processes. The IT department, too. I mean, we, when I look at the culture in my own department, I'm like, we are very task orientated. And I'm trying to change that, but we, we're not outcome-based. You know, people don't, you know, they're still saying, I completed this task. And it's still like, well, what's the outcome? What do you want it to do? Does it do that? And, I mean, you know, I think it's just, it needs to be a culture shift, and, um...
Can I go back a little to implementation? Wasn't there somebody here to help with that, to help get this implemented, so that it wasn't all on your shoulders? And...
Yeah.
I, I'm, I'm still so very confused about how, I don't know why it should take three years to begin with. And maybe I don't understand, and, and, anyway, sorry.
So, so Munis is, is an important software for the city. Um, it, it runs our financial systems. Uh, right now, we're running billing collection and, um, multiple uses of Munis. Um, and yes, uh, probably when it was purchased and implemented, um, we probably dropped the ball. I know that, um, the city had a implementation czar, for lack of a better word, at the time, and...
And that was when?
When did, when did it happen? Five years ago? When did we purchase?
Um, so probably two years before I came back, so it's probably been like seven years. I'm assuming up in here five.
And so, for seven years, you've been struggling to get this done?
Well, no, they, they've added new stuff. Like, it's not just, um, the core stuff was done. Then people want extra modules, right? I think the asset management part was purchasing Joanne Sanmiego, and I, and I don't remember correctly. I think she started that. So, again, like I said, these are modules you can buy. It's not, you can buy different models at different times, add different features. So, it's not like, um, it's all was bought at one time, um, and then we just didn't implement. It was modulated. So, I think it started with payroll and HR, maybe, uh, then went to finance, um, accounts receivable.
So, in a perfect implementation, what Tony's talking about is you have, uh, area experts in PD, or in finance, or in billing collection, that work with the, the czar on the overall project. And again, I think on, on the purchase of Munis, we lost that czar midway through. And, and I'm not sure that we did a good job with, in each individual department, on knowing what we do, because we have to tell, the software's not just right out of the box and plug it in. It has to be customized to meet the needs of each department. And so, the whole idea with going with a, uh, an organizational product was to minimize the possible impact on IT when we had dozens and dozens of different softwares out there. And I think that was the overall driving, um, the overall reason to go towards a Munis or a Tyler, because, hey, it can do everything that a city needs. And as it's implemented, and this department looks at it, and it doesn't work, they go out and find their own. And this department doesn't work, they go out and find their own. And so, you get the proliferation of multiple softwares again, when we were trying to avoid that, and with the purchase of Munis. So, we, we've heard about MGO today, you've heard about Munis. How many software programs are we running out there?
Um, I mean, we're running quite a bit. And the ERP systems are very difficult to implement. It doesn't, it doesn't matter. Like, um, any IT professionals, I tell you, and they're saying, we're moving to ERP systems, it's a nightmare. Like, it's, these are always difficult for any organization. I mean, it's, it's never gonna go smooth, and you're probably gonna push it two or three years, because it's a lot. I mean, it's, it's, it's not easy. It's just not, um, and it's...
It's not the perfect solution, but it is working for our finance department. If you ask billing collection, man, Munis is not the answer.
I, I've heard.
If you, it just depends on the department you ask, but it is a functional software system that is upgraded from time to time. We just went through an upgrade, and that, that brings issues as well.
Correct. And, and again, those upgrades get pushed back, because the departments aren't ready for it. We push it back. I mean, we can do them anytime, it's just bandwidth. But a lot of it just comes down to, we don't know how the information flows from A to Z. It's hard no matter, even if we went all with Munis, it's gonna be difficult. Like, um, you know, we're supposed to be reconciling every month. That should catch a lot of the mistakes. Even if we had different modules from different systems, if we knew, if we had it mapped out, it's just, it's just a matter of saying, okay, the sub ledger's over here, and that, that's where your customer information is, the GL's over here. They just need to match and roll up to each other. As long as we know that, and it's doing it every month, you can do that. I mean, it's not, um, it's a matter of just reporting and really knowing what you're doing. You, you can have other, other, um, your ERP system being one, and then having, you know, billing collections have a different software, right? And your AR probably needs to stay in Munis, you know, your accounts receivable stuff, yeah, but the actual billing collections customer stuff could probably be moved off, and then we just bring it over to the AR, to the AR module, and it rolls up to the GL. And that's probably not really that big of an issue. It's really, finance would have to weigh in on that, because if they want to look at the customer, the detail stuff, right, they would have to go to a different software. They would just need permissions and things like that. But it still should be the department should be making sure that's correct, right? And even, even when we do it through the departments, um, really, probably you do more QC, more quality assurance, or at least, um, more reports to make sure. I know when we went through it, a lot of it, um, you know, things are just set up incorrectly. So, even, you can't catch that. I mean, you, you roll up to GL, that everything rolls up. That's, it's gonna look fine, but that doesn't mean it's being charged correctly, right? So, they're still on the customer data side. You still have to do quality assurance or some type of reporting to make sure what you said it's supposed to do is it's doing, right? You're not gonna catch that, because it's gonna roll up to the GL, and it's gonna be right. Everything's gonna match, everything's gonna reconcile, but that doesn't mean that customer data is correct, right? That's a different thing. And that comes to processes and quality assurance, and those are things we struggle with. So, it's, it's a complicated, huge, moving thing. And if we don't, we're not super organized, we're always gonna struggle. And I think most people, most big industries or companies do struggle with it. I mean, it's not just the city. I do feel that's where we're really weak, is processes. I mean...
So, what do we do about it? Because I'm not hearing anything that we're doing.
I was gonna say, there's gotta be a better way to do this.
Like, I don't know. To me, it's culture. To me, it's, it's a culture shift. We have to start talking about processes, talking about quality assurance, talking about being outcome-based and not task-based, understanding how information flows. I mean, if we don't start understanding how it flows upstream and downstream, and departments caring, and not caring, I mean, but knowing, like, when it leaves you, who does it go to, and how does it affect them? And even departments, when they get the, when they get the data, right, is it incorrect, you know? It's, I don't...
I just, I don't feel, I don't know...
We don't have checks and balances.
But I, that, to me, is a symptom. I, I don't, that doesn't seem like the problem.
Okay. So, I'm running the plumbing department over here. I'm just gonna use this as an example. He doesn't know anything about plumbing. So, I need to give, when he comes, I need to tell him what I need in this department. I need to tell him how this flows. So, I get a call, we put the parts together, and it goes, that type of a deal. He needs some kind of direction on how you want this information to flow. Nobody's giving him that. So, you're trying to get him to have to learn your whole plumbing department. He knows nothing about plumbing.
Right.
So, you don't want him to, all you want him to do is take what you want and let him build you, build that into that system, and it works. Then...
I, I don't know why he's building anything.
That's okay.
Why, why are we...
It's an SOP. We don't have an SOP for any department. This is what we were going through on the last council.
But I'm talking about software.
We were going through this in the last council. We had no SOPs for half our departments.
Let me, let me weigh in, if you don't mind, Tony. Uh, I hear the frustration in your voice. Uh, I hear that we've had a system for seven years that we haven't really got the integration up to speed. So, I'm hearing from council that we don't have a solution. So, I guess what I want to do is, is, this is not a, a, a time to blame anyone or complain. It's time to fix, right? Let's just fix it, okay? I get it. I mean, I think we all hear the problem. We, we need the processes in place, so the software can, can then be, I guess, properly designed or properly implemented, so it actually works. So, I guess what I'm asking you and all department heads to consider is, what is the problem? Is it SOPs? Is it, do we, I mean, surely, everyone knows how to run their department. They wouldn't be there, right? What they need really, I guess, I guess, is, is from a, this coming from a non-IT guy, by the way, how do you integrate knowledge into the process? So, when we're doing audits, it's a simple click of a button, and it puts out that report, or whatever it is. And so, I hear your, your frustration that we haven't done that. So, all I know how to do is fix stuff. So, how can we just start now? Oh, look, it's January of '25. Pick a department. Let's do one at a time. How many do we have? Let's just draw on the calendar, for lack of a better explanation. And next month, we start the first one, and then we, we, we integrate. We, we, we come up with whatever we need. If it's the process, then can we not, can, can you or someone, maybe you have to hire an outside consultant, sit down and say, what do you do? Then here's the process, and then come up with the software solution. So, we're not talking about this seven years from now complaining because we didn't do anything. Let's quit complaining. Let's quit, I know there's frustration. Probably frustration on the apartment heads, because they don't, if they're like me, they're, they can't even explain what they do. But somehow, we have to merge knowledge and IT together. So, I'm just asking, how's the best way to accomplish that?
And I think we, we've actually already started. I know, um, uh, planning and Elizabeth did a great job with MGO, and that software forced them to map out the processes. And that's kind of how the software's going, is where it's kind of, how does your process work? And then it, and that's how it's working. That's how MGO is doing. And, um, so, I, I know they worked heavily on that, and that was good. I know when we do finance with asset management, I'm confident that's what we're gonna do, right? Because that's the, I, because when I talk to Kato, that's how she speaks, right? When someone speaks that way, you know, okay, that's how we're gonna do it. And that's, that's all I'm saying, is once we start entering that verbiage, and you start seeing people buy into it, it's gonna happen. So, I would start with the asset management, and then that could be the standard, because...
Well, I think you're hearing from council, we, we're asking all department heads to accept it, to step into it, to, to agree with it and live it. Uh, because we don't want, I mean, we want everything to work. We want everybody to be happy, but it's, we, someday, you just gotta stop, break it down, and fix it. And I think now's the time. And I don't know whether we do it, what's logical. I don't know. One department at a time, maybe. I don't know. You tell me. Uh, but let's, what can we do? Again, what can we do to help everyone solve this problem between department heads, I'm gonna call it processes, and IT? So, we buy this new updated Tyler Munis program, and actually, we know it's all gonna work the way it's supposed to, at least to, to the, to the, uh, its ability to really create a very functional operating system. So, if you need a report for an audit, they can hit a button, and it's done, versus to have to pull 10 spreadsheets for the past 12 months and, and get the data.
So, from my department's perspective, and that's why I know the best, is, um, and I've already begin, begin, is we're shifting to more programming, to more logic-based automation. So, essentially, what we, when you write a report, all you're doing is mimicking business processes. But you have to know what those business processes are, right? It's not like you're just crunching numbers. No, you're mimicking a business process and making sure that's what, that's, that's the, the numbers, or that's the outcome that, that you're doing. Um, I, I would probably have to give it Mr. Morton, really, to ask about how he would want to approach it, and how Mr. Bernard would want to approach this. I don't really know how much IT directors should be dictating to people, to my peers, right? They're, they're my peers. I'm not their superior. I think they all do a great job. I'm just visiting my, my frustrations. I'm just visiting my frustrations, specifically with Munis implementation. That's what I experienced, right? With the Munis implementation, that's exactly what I experienced. And I would just love us to, like I said, be more outcome-based and start making sure...
And I think my second question is, you know, do we do this, approve it for a year, and spend this year looking for a better software? A better solution?
And that would be... I mean, I would say, I would assume finance, purchasing, payroll, or fine was their solution, was Munis. Probably just billing collections that wants to move away. And again, that's something we can look at. I think it would just be keeping the AR module, because we already have departments that aren't in Munis, and they just... They give their total to billing collections. They enter into the AR module, and then it rolls up to the GL. That would really have to be a discussion with finance, because they know better on how they want it to look and how they want it to work than I would.
Richard, can I pick on you for a minute, just to kind of give us your thoughts?
Sure. I don't know that... I mean, the dream was that there was one product that the whole organization could use. I don't know that that's reality. Seven years later, six years later, whatever that is. I don't know that it's reality. Munis does work for finance, for payroll, and it's working well. It's not working well in other areas. And those areas... And each department head knows the product they want to provide, and they... If the software's not working for them, then they start the process to find a software that works for them. And that's what has happened over time. That's why you have MGO. That's why you have billing collection, trying to work through a Munis software that isn't exactly working for them. So, the direction to them is, go find the best billing collection software out there that other cities are successful with, and let's bring it back, and let's talk about it. Can we afford it is always a question, okay? So, I would charge every department head to find out what every other city's using, and if it's Munis, let's make it work. If it's another product, let's make that work. But we have to know. And we've had this issue with PD over the years, and Mike's not here, but moving to particular recording devices out there, whether on person or in the cars, I charge them or have charge with, "Go find something that works and that you can support." The same thing here. And I know Tony's frustrated, and I hear it, but for the most part, we're delivering the services that we need to provide. We're struggling in so many areas, and you know that, because some of those have been under stress. And so, we see those weaknesses. Again, I believe in the department heads, that they know what they need. Sometimes, we saddle them as we make these decisions at this level at council. With purchasing, like this Munis product, "Hey, guys, it's coming at you. You're gonna have to make it work."